All right, I would like to welcome everybody to this 2:00 PM meeting of the Sacramento Housing Authority and City Council, which I now call to order at 2:03 PM. Madam City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Here.
Councilmember Tal?
Here.
Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Protem Telemontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Vice Mayor Maple?
Here.
Councilmember Garrett is absent. Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Bing?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg is absent.
Okay, we believe that Councilmember Garrett will be joining us momentarily. With that, Councilmember Kaplan, would you mind leading us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge allegiance?
Absolutely. We stand in for evil for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land...
The Ni'inon people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plain Miwok, the Put'wan-Wintun peoples, and the people of Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' histories, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. And we will start out this very exciting hearing with item number one. Authorization to dispose of property at 1224 North B Street.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of the council. My name is Vicki Smith. I'm a management analyst with SHRA. And this report requests your authority to sell a housing authority-owned property at 1400 North B Street to the Salvation Army. The housing authorities own this property since June of 1989. It was originally purchased as part of a proposed social services campus that was envisioned in the area at that time. Property's been leased to the Salvation Army for the operation of their women's shelter since that time. They also own the adjacent property, which is located at 1200 North B Street, which is utilized as a men's shelter. And both buildings are operated together as Salvation Army's Center of Hope, and they provide 140 shelter beds nightly. There's no foreseeable use that the housing authority can think of for this property, so staff is recommending selling it to, selling 1224 North B Street at fair market value to Salvation Army and offering them a 30-year seller carrier-back loan for the purchase, which will be a zero-interest loan. The current fair market value is $310,000, and loan payments will be made annually for the term of the loan. The agreement will require that Salvation Army continue operations of the property as a shelter, and staff, in their due diligence, confirm that Salvation Army has adequate funds to continue these operations. Once approved by the board, staff will complete the process with the goal of having the property transferred by the end of the year. And that concludes my presentation. We're here for any questions, and also re-array from Salvation Army is here as well.
All right, we appreciate that. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
All right, hearing seen none. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you, and thank you so much for bringing this item forward. And thank you to Salvation Army for operating important services. I'm happy to open and close the public hearing and move this item. Thank you.
Motion in a second. Okay, I will, all those in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed or abstained? All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to the very exciting discussion calendar item.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Stephanie Green. I'm the program manager for federal programs at SHRA. SHRA administers HUD Formula Program grants on behalf of the city. And today, we are asking you to approve the five-year consolidated plan, as well as the 2025 annual action plan for those funds. The consolidated plan we're asking you to approve identifies the goals, which will guide the one-year action plan priorities for federal programs over the next five years. And the 2025 action plan identifies specific activities that will be undertaken over the next year with our federal entitlement grants to meet the objectives identified in the consolidated plan. Heidi Agler from Root Policy, who was our consultant for the consolidated planning process, is here to discuss the consolidated plan, the process, and the outcomes, after which I will go over the 2025 action plan. Heidi?
Excellent, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. It's my pleasure to be here to talk about the consolidated plan. A couple, for those of the members of the public who are attending, give you a little bit of a brief background on the consolidated plan. The purpose of the consolidated plan, as Stephanie mentioned, is to identify community needs. That's the first phase, which we've undertaken, which was been sort of in process over the last about five or six months, and then develop a strategy and guidelines for allocating funds to be able to meet the identified needs. We conducted extensive consultation with stakeholders, and by stakeholders, I mean people who are in the practice of housing and community development and supportive services, as well as residents. And I'll talk about that engagement throughout my presentation. So I'm going to touch on the community engagement initially. I'll move into something called the needs assessment. And that's where we look at the needs of different types of populations in finding housing and supportive services, talk a little bit about the housing market and how that's changed, and then I'll move to the strategic plan goals, stop to get comment, and then turn it over to Stephanie for the action plan presentation. So in terms of the community engagement, we undertook a number of activities, and this started in the spring of 2024 and continued throughout the summer. My colleague Sherri Coulter and I conducted interviews with stakeholders. Those were virtually one-on-one, as well in a small group setting, both in person, as well as via Zoom or Teams. And this included city and county staff, affordable housing providers, and nonprofit service providers, so people who are in the business of providing services to low and moderate-income people. We conducted outreach to 11 low-to-moderate neighborhood associations, helped them understand how to promote the survey, the resident survey that we were fielding for the study. We also offered to come to their meetings, both in person or virtually, to talk about the plan, educate their residents about the plan, and encourage them to become involved. We also did what we call pop-up tabling. So we set up tables, we had activities, we came to a number of events that you see here. We also did these activities in Citrus Heights. They were a partner in completing the consolidated plan. And overall, we had about a little over 400 city residents complete the survey. You can see here on the slide, those sort of subbullets there show you the types of representation that we got demographically. This survey's not meant to be statistically significant. What we're trying to do is reach underrepresented populations and low-to-moderate income populations to really understand their needs. We did a pretty good job with that. About 50% of the household had children, 11% were single parents, 14% were currently or previously unhoused. That's a really hard population to capture, so we were really happy to see that share of folks who contributed to the survey. 29% assisted, publicly assisted, or income-based housing. About half had reported incomes under $75,000 a year. And we had a pretty good distribution of residents racially and ethnically. I will note, if you're looking at that last bullet and trying to add that up to 100%, you'll see it doesn't quite get there, and that's because we had a large number of people decline to report their race or ethnicity, or reported as other. In terms of the needs assessment, and I'm following the framework of the consolidated plan in my presentation, what HUD looks for when they do a needs assessment, they're really looking for a deep dive for populations that have significant needs. For the first bullet here, cost burden and severe cost burden, that's where households pay more than 30% or 50% of their income in housing costs. Those are the most common housing problems, and it's become more common as housing prices have gone up. When we asked people, both stakeholders, as well as residents participating in the survey, what their top needs were, we found particularly here in the city that home improvement rehabilitation needs were prevalent for low-income residents. They told us they needed grab bars, they needed modifications to their showers and their bathrooms to be able to stay in their homes and age in their homes. This certainly presents an opportunity for affordable housing preservation. Mental health services and services for the unhoused were their, were top community priorities. So we asked folks responding to the survey what they would prioritize, and many in the, in the city, so many of the cities respond, has prioritized mental health services. A little bit different for the county, they tended to prioritize services for people who are elderly. We heard a lot about difficulty in navigating supportive services, so really trying to find, where do I go? Where can I get help? And there was a lot of obstacles expressed to accessing services. And then in terms of housing, emergency and permanent supportive housing was a top need, coupled with homeless prevention, and then services, direct rental assistance to be able to prevent eviction. In terms of the market analysis, so we take, we do what's something called a gaps analysis, where we compare the distribution of rental units to the distribution of renters who need affordable units. Where there is a difference, we call that a gap. We also first start with people who have very, very low incomes, knowing that they're not going to be able to find housing in the private sector, and we look at how many units of publicly subsidized housing there is to help them. So that first bullet gives you the results from that analysis. There are approximately 24,000 households who earn, and this is just in the city of Sacramento, who earn $25,000 per year or less. These renters need housing, they need rental units that cost less than $625 a month, and as you might imagine, that's really hard to find. And usually, those units are publicly supported. So there is a gap of about 17,000 units when we compare the number of renters in that income bracket with the number of units to serve them. We look at home buying opportunities. We found that more than 80% of homes are only affordable for folks with income of $100,000 or more, and 50% of those are $150 and more. So pretty hard to buy a home right now unless you're making $150,000 and more. When we did, when we talked to stakeholders and asked them about community development needs, they said infrastructure improvement, vacant lot disposition, environmental remediation is really their top needs to be able to support community development, particularly in low-income neighborhoods. And workforce development, digital literacy, financially, financial counseling, and small business startup assistance was also a top priority expressed by stakeholders. So we put all of this information together, and I'm sure you've had a chance to peruse the study that's been available for public comment. We have in that study both the needs assessment, and I just really scratched the surface with highlights, pretty in-depth market analysis, and then a very robust analysis of the community engagement, findings that I hope that you all can use for broader planning purposes. We put all that together, and we come up with recommended goals. We worked really closely with SHRA and with city staff to be able to refine these goals to make sure that they adequately represented the strategy that will guide funding over the next five years. And those goals are develop, preserve, and finance a continuum of decent, affordable housing, and that would include rehabilitation and facilitating those connections to wraparound services, so really bolstering housing plus supportive services. Goal two speaks to revitalizing low-income neighborhoods, eliminating blight, and promoting economic development. That would include vacant lot and environmental remediation, as well as improving streets, parks, and sidewalks, making all of those more accessible, making them better in low-income neighborhoods, and improving safety. Goal three, providing community and support services. HUD calls these public services, but you could think of those as the services that nonprofits provide to low-income people. Goal four, promote equal housing opportunities and coordinate with fair housing advocates to bolster landlord education and outreach, so help not only residents, but housing providers understand what their rights are under fair housing law. Goal five, contribute to continued improvement of the continuum of care system. That's the system that people experiencing homelessness go through to be able to get help. Goal six, and this really speaks to that community navigator services that we talked about, so challenges that people have in finding the services that they need, working on implementing effective and efficient management practices to enhance customer service. HUD calls this institutional structure, so taking a leadership role on ensuring that people can get the services that they need. Goal seven speaks to workforce development, so investing in workforce development, digital literacy, giving people the ability, particularly low and moderate-income households, the ability to be able to start businesses and be successful. Goal eight speaks to disaster response and recovery activities. And goal nine is supporting the Marisol Village and Twin Rivers Transit Area Development and Light Rail Station. And that would be through a Section 108 loan. That's a loan that is active, that borrows against future CDBG funding to be able to make improvements. And so with that, I'll go ahead, and I'm happy to take any comments before we move into accomplishments in the action plan.
Okay, any councilmembers have comments now, or would you like to wait until the end? Yeah, okay, we'll get through the presentation, and then we'll answer questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Heidi. So before I turn your focus from the consolidated plan to the 2025 annual action plan, I wanted to provide an update on some accomplishments that were achieved in 2024. A few infrastructure and public facility projects that were completed this year include the O'Neill Field ADA-compliant restroom, which was design and construction of a new ADA-compliant restroom, Torley Park Playground Equipment, which was designed and construction to replace existing playground equipment, Northwood School Access Improvements, which was pedestrian improvements in the Northwood Elementary School community, and the Thelma and Hawk Park Master Plan, which was to draft design and construction documents for that master plan. For public services, we provide a variety of safety net programs. This slide provides an estimate of the number of people and households served by those programs in 2024. Those programs include meals to seniors through the Meals on Wheels program, homeless and housing assistance through our rapid rehousing activities, home repair programs through SHRA's Home Repair Program, and the Rebuilding Together Program, as well as providing operational funding for shelters. I did also want to note here that today, the Open Arms Shelter in the city of Sacramento opened, and that's providing 20 beds at an emergency shelter for people who are homeless and have HIV or AIDS. So that was another big accomplishment this year. Now, looking forward to 2025, this slide shows what we anticipate receiving from HUD for each funding source in the city, and this is an estimate based on previous year's allocations. Overall, we anticipate having approximately 10.2 million in funding in the city. And this, as you can see, is for CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant, Home, which is Home Investment Partnership Program, ESG, which is Emergency, the Shelters Grant, and then HOPLA, which is Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. This table shows an overview of the proposed 2025 CDBG allocations by category. The categories include infrastructure and public facilities improvements, housing development and homeownership, which is allocated to multifamily rehabilitation and home repairs for low- to moderate-income homeowners, public services, which is used for Meals on Wheels and homeless activities, grant planning and admin, so this is for staffing, and also for our fair housing programs, HUD loan repayment, and this is that Section 108 loan for the infrastructure at Marisol Village. And then we always include a line item for capital reserve in case any projects go over budget. This slide shows the proposed infrastructure and public facility projects for 2025. I do want to note that the HUD eligible areas did change as of August this year. About every five years, HUD comes out with new underlying low-moderate-income data for the Eligible Areas Map. So those maps to determine project eligibility have slightly changed this year. Based on those new eligible areas and other factors, the proposed projects include the Roblo Community Park Project. This project includes design, engineering, and construction drawings for a future prefabricated restroom building. Niños Park, which is to replace the existing totlot and adventure play structures and accessibility improvements. Dos Rio Site Remediation, so this is to support environmental remediation for the Triangle Site near the Marisol Village for future housing development. Argonaut Park, this is new accessible walkway improvements. Earl Warren Park, which is design, engineering, and construction drawings for replacement of an existing restroom, and 24th Street Bypass Park, which is installation of fitness equipment. In addition to the infrastructure projects, the other two main categories we fund in the action plan are housing and public services. And for those programs, we propose to continue funding our ongoing programs, which also continue to meet the goals of the new consolidated plan. For CDBG, those programs include Meals on Wheels, homeless shelter activities, the home repair programs, affordable housing rehab, and our fair housing activities. For ESG, we fund rapid rehousing and shelters. For Home, we fund new construction and rehab of multifamily housing. And for HOPLA, we fund housing assistance and operations, case management, and multifamily acquisition and construction. So that concludes my presentation. We're asking you to approve the 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan, the 2025 one-year action plan for the city and the county, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate the wonderful presentation from you both. And then we'll move on and see if there's any public comment.
Thank you. We have no speakers on this item.
Okay, wonderful. So I'll move on first to Councilmember Garrett.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. First, thank you very much. Appreciate your staff's work on this, and also the focus on some of our older parks that have, have had, you know, restrooms and bathrooms and facilities that are not accessible to families. Appreciate the focus on Earl Warren Elementary and, and a lot of the focus that's being done around that area on both walking pedestrian safety, because it's adjacent to a school, and it's the local open space for that area on Fort Ridge Road. First question here that I have, though, is in the goals, you know, why is it, why do we identify in the Section 109 loan as a, as its own standalone goal when the goals are generally broad? I find that, I'd find that uncommon.
Yeah, that one is a little bit odd. The reason we had to include that is because HUD requested that in order to continue using the robust environmental document that we prepared for the Twin Rivers project, that we had to continue it into the new consolidated plan so that we didn't have to redo the environmental document, and it had to be identified as a specific goal. So that is the primary reason that that's there.
So HUD specifically said that in order for us to continue to fund that, we need to identify it. Okay. And then that brings me to my second question. You know, these are pretty general goals. I mean, when I go back there, it's, you know, I could argue pretty much just about anything we do in the city fits in those goals. And so there's two sides to that coin. One, how, how, how can we actually focus on our limited resources? Are we just kind of spreading everything in and making our goals so broad that we can just fund any random need at the same time? Because they do seem pretty, I mean, from, everything from workforce development to housing, to lighting, to safety, to technology, seems to me, if we're trying to tackle a problem, we should be pretty specific about the goals we're trying to set. And on the flip side of that, the second side of the coin, you know, is if we need to change, this is a five-year, this is a five-year, the goals are set for the five-year plan, we're actually taking action on the 2025 numbers, but how do these goals lock us into a future council looking at priorities as they arise? Another issue that may come up where we need to focus. One particular one that, that has come to, that we're trying to address immediately right now is the impact on youth gun violence. And so if that issue were to change, or another issue comes up, how do the, these, this five-year action plan allow us to, to shift for priorities? So explain to me that process that the federal government requires us.
Yeah, I'll try to answer your first question first. Yes, they are fairly broad. We are also limited certain categories. For example, we can only fund a certain percentage of activities for public services each year. Most of the funding goes to infrastructure projects, so we are limited by that and by the amount of funding that we receive. But the goals themselves are fairly broad, excuse me. And I believe they are meant to be, because that gives us a little bit of flexibility as what we do with those funds throughout those five years. And then as to your second question, if there is a change in priorities, or if we foresee that there is, we can do a substantial amendment to the consolidated plan at any point if we do find that there is a major change in need. But for the most part, these goals should direct our actions over the next five years. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just might add, Christine Weigert with SHRA. For example, I believe the youth programs would already be covered in those general goals that we listed up there. So that is one reason we leave them purposely broad.
Well, Madam Vice Mayor, I'll go ahead and move the, the item here in the action plan. But I, I'll just say for caution, and at least for us to continue to look through this as the years come by, that if, you know, the, I believe in the work that our staff is doing. I believe, you know, we had immense impacts on, on, on road safety and issues that we funded. We're doing some of this. Niños Park, the funding for Niños Park is, is a huge improvement to an area that's needed that. And so these are throughout our city where there's great need. But I also, you know, worry that if the, if the goals are so broad and this council or the county isn't actively engaged, then it just kind of dilutes the work that we're trying to make an impact. And not that the agency isn't trying to do the best that it can, but it'll, I just feel that the lack of focus can be problematic. So don't obviously want to not have a plan in place that doesn't allow us to tap in money, but I worry about that item. So with that, I'll go ahead and move the staff report, but I'd like to continue this conversation as we move through the five-year plan. Thanks.
All right, well taken. And we have a motion in a second. Do we have any other members wishing to make comments? All right, seeing none. For me, I just want to really, want to agree with a lot of what my colleague said. I think that, you know, having the right goals in place, having specificity is important, but also, you know, I believe having, having the ability to be flexible is important, too, because we know a lot of these projects, as I've learned about this process, some of these projects are a little bit complicated or weird, and so I appreciate the flexibility, too. So finding that sweet spot will be really important. And I just really want to give a shout out for the investment into, and the addition of Argonaut Park in this project in District 5. You know, it's a community that really deserves to have something like this happen. So really excited to, to, to be voting on this. And so with that, I will call on Councilmember Jennings to make a comment.
Thank you very much. I would have seconded that if it hadn't already been done. But I think the question that comes to mind is, in the process of a five-year plan, how often will it come back to the council so that we can give input to any potential changes that we can make within the plan? How often would that happen? Or is there a plan for that right now that we know of that it'll come back? Or do we need to request that it come back as we start talking about?
I believe you would need to request it. I'm going to defer on the technicalities to Heidi.
Thank you, Stephanie. What typically happens is that you do have the opportunity to provide input on the annual spending as part of the action plan. If you were to modify the goals, you would need to reopen the consolidated plan for that modification. And for those of you who were involved in these kinds of processes during the pandemic, you saw a lot of those amendments, so a lot of reopening of the goals of anybody's plan as new federal dollars were coming in to make sure that those were aligned. I will say that I do think, and I have a lot of clients, I've done this for 25 years for clients, some of our clients' goals are so broad that they are home rehabilitation, period, or affordable housing, and there's, and you really, that's not really a strategy or a plan, per se, just sort of a statement of what could be. I feel like the, that SHRA did a really nice job of striking that balance between flexibility, but also really calling in and embedding priorities in these goals. To the extent that you would have something, an activity that's not captured in these goals, that would probably be something like, you know, a major natural disaster or sort of an exogenous shock, that then you would be getting additional funds for, like a pandemic, which would enable you to add goals or to modify the plan. That's probably the most likely scenario.
But I think the question was answered that it would have to be initiated from the council to you. And since we meet with the executive director, at least some of us do on a frequent basis, I think it'd be pretty easy for us to be able to communicate the need to change. And so I'm confident in what's in front of us today, and as I say, I would have seconded it, but it's already been done, so I will third it.
You will make an honorary third on this motion.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, great comments. And with that, please call the roll. I guess we could have done, all those in favor, say, I, we'll do this instead, because I think I know where this is at. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstained? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Do we have any public comments not on the agenda?
Thank you. We have one. Ron Esme?
Folks, it seems like there's an elevated murder rate or assault rate on Shaw property, or stuff that Shaw pays for. And that's degradating neighborhoods like Oak Park. There was one time, two murders. Now, it wasn't right on Shaw property. It was across the alley on a vacant lot. But it's within, say, 50 feet of Shaw property. And the reason why they got killed was because Shaw property was there. If it was a private landlord or owner of the property, somebody would care. But no one cares. You know, so you could preserve life if you distilled in Shaw to... I don't know what you could do to distill in Shaw. I don't know what you could do to distill in Shaw, but it's sad. And then also Shaw property. We, we had Art Ballard, who had, oh, KJ took it over. But things were, were not the best, but they were under wraps. Then when Shaw foreclosed on Art Ballard, they turned it over to the Jon Stewart Company to manage. This was before KJ bought it. And you know, high noon, I saw two crackos. They were in the stairwell going up to the second floor, waving customers down. They were too lazy to get up and do anything. They were just sitting there. Now, how disgusting. Would you like crackos in your neighborhood waving at customers? It's sickening. Shaw doesn't care. Is that my time?
Yes. Yes, thank you for your comment. Your comment is now complete.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your comments.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay. I will propose that we perhaps save our council comments, questions, ideas for the 5:00 p.m. meeting, and then with that, I believe we are to adjourn into closed session.
Yes, thank you. We are going to, go ahead, sir.
Councilor Jennings.
I would love to save this for our session at 5:00, but I have two interns that are in the audience, and they are from UC Davis and UC Santa Barbara, and they won't be here for the 5:00 o'clock meeting, and I want to acknowledge them and their work in City Hall, Samantha Torres and Jade Morales. Please stand.
A round of applause. Thank you so much for your service on the fifth floor and with Councilmember Jennings' office. We're really thrilled to have you. Do we have anything else? I don't want to move on too quickly. Okay, so now we will adjourn to closed session. Do you want to help us do that, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. We're going to close in adjournment to a special meeting for closed session at 3:00. We have two items. First is pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6, for a matter pertaining to negotiations with unrepresented employees, the city auditor. The purpose is to confer with the city's chief negotiator, Mary Steinberg. The second item is pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B, for a matter pertaining to personnel performance evaluation of the city manager. We have no public comment.
All right, and with that, we are adjourned. No problem.